Council meeting on October thirteenth. Like to start us off with a quick prayer. Father God, we thank you for a beautiful day. Thank you, Lord, for our community. We pray for vision and direction in this meeting and pray you'd help us be successful. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Okay, and I'll stand and do the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, few changes to our agenda. Like to move Randy McCoyn up to new business or before new business, actually. So he's here to give us that cat cat update. So I'd like to move him up here. We're also going to get into housing grant update on new business. And then Hannah from Barnes and Thornburg is here, just going to update her on the geo bond. So.
Let's start with the public hearing.
Yeah, okay. Public hearing first, oh yeah, there it is, your public hearing, additional comments. So and also, this is actually the public hearing for our budget.
Additional appropriations.
I'm sorry. Okay, um, public hearing for additional appropriations. So is there any comments? Now Hannah, is this something that you're going to talk?
This is for the bond.
This is for the bond, okay, okay. Do you want to go ahead and, do you want to go ahead and, uh, that'd be great, thank you.
Good evening, Hannah Clendenning, Barnes and Thornburg. I'm here in place of my colleague, Kim Blanchett. Uh, we've been serving as bond council to the city of the proposed geo bonds. Um, so this is the second stage of the required approvals legally speaking. So the first one was done back in, um, I think August, we were last here. And that was just the introduction of the bond ordinance. Now we're asking that we open a public hearing tonight and hold this and allow the public to come up and have questions, comments, what have you, um, both to educate the council and the public on what's being proposed here. Following the close of the public hearing later in the meeting, we would then ask you to consider two separate items. One would be the bond ordinance, which authorizes all of the maximum terms. So that would be a $400,000 amount as the highest possible amount that could be issued. A maximum of six percent for the interest rate. And then I think it's a four-year term, so the final maturity would be no later than 2029. So again, these are all just maximums. It's very likely that the city would issue less than that depending on when they're issued, pricing, that kind of thing. But it's designed to have a lot of flexibility for the proposed project, which covers, I think, a lot of different things. It's, um, fire department improvements, is that right? Parks, a school, the former elementary school.
Former elementary school, yeah.
So yeah, and then the other resolution would be the additional appropriation, which is just because this was not originally provided for in the budget for the year. So I'm happy to answer any other questions, but that's just kind of the big picture of what we've got on the table today.
We actually voted on this last month.
But we didn't sign the bond ordinance.
We didn't stand the binding order.
Gotcha.
So that's why we had to bring it back up again this month. But, um, any questions or anything we want to talk about? Okay, do we have a motion then to approve again, I guess? Do we need a motion to give? We already approved it once, I guess. Did we, Margaret, do we need a?
Yeah, we can consider at the second reading.
Did you say the interest rate max was six percent?
Six percent.
Yeah.
These days we can see a little circle.
Oh, good.
Do we need to vote on this again?
Yeah, let's, the second reading tonight.
Okay, all right. So John, did you, you were gonna?
Well, we gotta close the public hearing and then get a.
Oh, okay. All right, okay. I guess, uh, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Corey motions. Travis second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Since we're on the bond subject, do we have a motion to approve our, our geo bond?
I'll make a motion to approve the geo bond.
Gary motions, Michael seconds, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, all right, thank you.
And then I just want to make sure, so there's also the appropriation resolution.
Yes. That's the resolution. Resolution number 202504. This is for the additional 400,000 for the budget.
Does it have to be approved separately than the bond?
Yes.
Okay, all right, okay. Okay, do we have a motion to approve our resolution? For, for, for 400,000 up for additional appropriations for our geo bond we just approved?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, Travis motions.
I'll second.
John second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is that everything? Okay, well, thank you. All right, thank you.
I'll get him said in the morning.
Yeah, okay, we all sign him and send him, so.
Just squiggles on the right.
Yeah, we start from here.
We'll get to it.
What a short name. All right. Okay, do we have a motion to approve the agenda as shown?
With?
With the changes I've, I've suggested.
Amended.
As amended.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Okay, John motions.
I'll second.
Michael seconds, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to approve our minutes as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from October 6th.
Okay.
And the executive.
For September, it's apologies.
Okay, and yeah, we got two of them there. Okay, Travis motions.
Yep.
I'll second.
Okay, okay. Corey seconds, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and Randy, would you want to step up to the mic there?
Whatever.
You, you want to just tell us about to your cats and how, any, any episode, any episodes or any experiences you had with them?
There's a lot of them.
Yeah.
Cause every cat I caught was within five spots.
Really? Wow.
And that's just, just right from the Speedway.
Yeah.
To the apartments, to even my shop, and I only known the cat.
Wow.
They, they went good. I mean, I caught quite a few of them.
Yeah.
Twenty or twenty-one, I can't remember exactly how many I caught.
Yeah, well.
Took up and, uh, and, uh, and would have had more if people wanted to turn them loose. I had a lot of cages that you could tell people would open them up and let the cats out cause it had hair in them and.
Yeah.
If it's got hair in them, there was something in them, so.
Yeah, wow, yeah.
And there's more out there.
Yeah.
But like I said, I just was right here in, in just a little circle right here and caught that many, you know, so.
Yeah. There's a lot out there, but yeah, do you have any, uh, any bad ones that gave you a hard trouble, hard time reading?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, a bunch of them.
Yeah. Didn't like getting caught, eh?
There was one that was a small one. I mean, looked like it was just as cute and cuddly until you went to do anything. Even get close to the cage, it'd stick its paw through and try to get you. Even the ladies at the vet said, now, you can tell that's a feral cat. And it was cute though. I, I thought, oh, that's a cute one. Picked it up and it did. It stuck its claws out and got me on the arm.
Wow.
I, I knew right then, but I, I did get a lot of the males.
Yeah.
I did get four or five big males, so.
Well, good, well.
I'll stop quite a few of them cause they travel everywhere, you know, so.
Well, I wanted to hear more for, uh, for more than just the update. I wanted to, we wanted to say thank you.
Oh, yeah, no problem, no problem, give me something to do.
You know, you, you did this for free and did it with your, I mean, even took the cats to the vet for free and we just, we just want to say thank you.
Just gives me something to do, keeps me out of trouble.
And thank you for, um, you know, your, the kids program you put on for the, in the Baldwin Park and all the tickets you gave away and everything.
Yeah, I gave 168 tickets away this year.
That's, that's awesome.
168.
Gosh. Well, we just want to say thank you by giving you a Montclair sweatshirt. Says, Mont, a great place to call home. And certainly your, your presence makes Montclair a great place to call.
I'll sure wear it. Perfect weather for it, too. Thank you. And like I say, you need any more caught, yes, all you gotta do is holler.
Okay, thank you so much.
Give me something else to do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a nice day.
That's fantastic.
Well, I, I tell you, I appreciate him. I, you know, there was a time where I wasn't sure who was going to catch our cats for us. And she, and he, and he stepped right up and, and was awesome, and I really appreciate it.
So we met our, our max on that.
Twenty was our max. I think he did catch 21, um, and, you know, whatever, silver. But, uh, yeah, so that was, so we might want to do more?
What is our, what's our budget remaining with like our kind of animal fund that we had from the beginning?
For the animal fund, we took about 20,000 from that. We could try to find some more for this year.
I mean.
We appropriated, what, a thousand?
$2,000?
Yeah, I think, I think we had two. I think, yeah, I think we did, yeah. About a hundred dollars a cat, yeah.
Cause I didn't know how much maybe we had left before the end of the year, if there's.
I'd have to look.
If it's possible. I mean, even if he catches five more cats, that's still going to make a difference if there's enough money available.
We'll find it, I can tell you that, Neil.
Yeah, well, so do you want to do another five or 10 or something?
Let's see what we got first.
Okay, okay.
Next meeting?
Yeah, the next meeting, we can have that. He sounds like he, he's ready to go.
Yeah, I know, yeah. Oh, he's, he's a great guy, I really appreciate him. So, yeah, yeah. Okay, and, see, we got the, okay, I guess next on our list is JP Doorways' quote. This goes back to a, um, public safety seminar that Smith Insurance organized for us. And it basically, it was sat through, I think, was it two hours of basically shootings, public shootings of people walking in public buildings and just shooting up the place? And, and they recommended that you have doors up. And so they, basically, so we came up to the idea that we better put doors in our openings here so that we can open and close them, being closed during the day and open, you know, like during meetings. And, um, JP Doorways would do that. He would also put in, take out that window that's over here. Would take that out in drywall and then also put a new window in for Michelle with a, with a speaker in the little slot so that she can have a little more of a, um, protection there as well. He did give us a, a bid, he's a local person, he lives around Jefferson. His bid is 10,500 for two new doors, the framing and everything, drywall and everything goes with that, putting in the window and, uh, or taking out the window and putting in a new window there, Michelle's. What, what do you guys think?
Did we just put a window in there, though?
Oh, over, over Michelle's?
For Michelle's? Oh, you meant out here.
All right, oh, I'm, I'm not talking about the doors. I, I'm.
No, I mean the window, didn't we just put in that window out there?
That one out there, we're talking about.
Oh, you're talking about this one right here?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay, I got you, okay.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's, that was put up for COVID. It's just a, um, flimsy piece of plastic.
Yeah, yeah, okay, I thought you were talking about that one out there. We just put that in, why are we tearing it out?
We can think about it or, but that's, that was suggested that we might want to disrobe on protection.
Did you get any other quotes?
I, we didn't, we asked, but, uh.
Couldn't find anyone right away.
But, yeah.
You gotta remember, a lot of his costs, those are specialty doors to close both of these. They're only four foot high, but.
Four foot wide.
Four foot.
Yeah, they're, yeah. John went fit through.
How tall is it?
It's, oh, I, uh.
Cause I thought, that's what it said for height.
It's probably 89 inches.
Well, that is a good question, let's see. Oh, yeah, two, 98 inch, 60, wait, 60 by 98. So, yeah, they would be, uh, they'd be pretty big.
I think he's got, he's nine, he's eight backwards.
Oh, oh, you think so? Oh, okay, all right, eight, well, so anyways, they're, they're gonna be, they're gonna be big enough, they should be.
Special order.
So.
So they'd be putting them on both sides?
Both sides, it basically then will allow, um, yeah, allow us to shut the doors during the day so that people just can't just walk right in and have media access to everybody. And we would keep all our doors shut. And, uh, so.
So we solicited for more quotes, but no one.
I haven't found anyone, really. We could try to get a few more.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, like, that's pretty cheap.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the $10,000 for the doors.
Okay.
Cause it's got to do with our public safety, I'm all for that.
Okay, okay. Uh, Gary motions and Corey seconds, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, all right. The long-term goal, or long-term.
Wait a minute.
What, oh.
Not opposed.
You guys, you guys passed it, I don't know, I'm just still thinking about it, but.
Okay, so you got.
Well, I mean.
Hey, you guys got, you got it for, you're good, no, you're good, you're, you're fine.
Okay, all right, well, did you, do you want, is there some comments you have, or do you?
I, I would, you know, quote.
I mean, I mean, yeah, if, I, I was just thinking like, I know he's door, door specific, so if anybody's going to do it, he's probably going to be the best to do the job, probably, because he's familiar with what we actually need and stuff.
He did put in the front doors.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, he's one of the fire trucks, the fire department as well, so.
So, I mean, I was thinking.
Well, that's, that's why I ask if you solicited for quotes, if no one's given you any, then.
It's only been a week since we got the quote, so.
You want, do you want to wait, or do we see, do you have some ideas or somebody else that you want to ask?
I, I don't, I mean, how, how quick would it be that he would have this completed to?
Oh, it's gonna be a while. The, the doors may take him up to six weeks.
Is that what he said?
No, but that's why that door takes six weeks.
Oh, okay.
Plus more.
Okay. He, he's pretty good, though, pretty quick, but, uh, and he does excellent work, I thought. I've just found, he did the front doors, he did this door, he's done the fire department. I, I, I think his work's excellent. And he's in Markford, the market shops. But, um.
No, no complaint.
I will say, he did my front door and I got four different quotes from four different people and he was like $5,000 less than everybody.
Yeah.
Just for my front door. So, I mean, his prices are.
I mean, his door was specific, so I, I guess, yeah, I, I, I would, I'll say, I'll vote yes on that then. John, if you'd like to stay abstained?
I'm abstaining, abstained, it's fine.
Okay, okay. Okay, well, motion carries then.
Maybe I just want to talk a little more about it, I don't know. That's good.
Okay, all right, okay.
Get some drama on YouTube. I was getting ready to flip the table. But thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. Keep this moving. All right. Okay, next up, um, let's see, budget order, so, okay. We have our, our 2026 budget as published.
We covered.
Yeah, we covered last month, okay.
The public hearing.
All right, so basically, this would be, um, do we need another vote on that then, or is that?
Does, I would ask if I had any questions or?
All right, do we have any questions or thoughts on our budget that we have? Do we have motion then to approve as, as stated? We, we actually covered this in September.
Gary. Four, I'm there. If you can go over the totals, if you want.
You want, I'll let you go over those.
The totals for general, debt surface, local road and street, MVH, CCI, CCD and redevelopment is 1,499,898. And your edit, riverboat, LL ECE, public safety, American Rescue Plan Fund, which is zero, TIF and MVH restricted is 2.25 million dollars. So a total of 3,004, uh, a million, or 3,505. And the adopted tax rate would be 1.61 or 1.6076.
It was put together by Jim Higgins and Margaret, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the budget.
Okay, John motions.
I'll second.
Okay, Corey seconds, all in favor, say aye.
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 I have to abstain from that because.
That's right.
Yeah, but you still have to mark it upstate.
Yeah, absolutely.
And Trick or Treat hours will be October 31st from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. So kids wanting to participate in Trick or Treat, 5:00 to 8:00 PM. People participating, leave your porch lights on. And I, I contacted Jill Orlando, who's going to run our, um, she's got a lot going on actually on, on October 25th, which is a Saturday. So there's, there's the farmer's market in the gazebo park. There'll be prizes, um, also, she's also putting on a, um, what's that called, a, uh?
A car show?
No, anything, anything but a car show. So, uh, basically, anybody can bring anything and, and, um, and show it there and there'll be prizes for that, set for prizes for most original and all kinds of prizes. And then immediately following that will be Hometown Halloween, which will start at noon following the farmer's market. And Trick or Trunk, or Trunk or Treat will be from 1:00 to 3:00 PM. The Dream Food Truck will be there, there'll be prizes for the best dedicated trunks and spaces for those who participate in Trunk or Treat. And Showtime, Showtime Dance Academy will have a flash mob. Free hot dogs will be available, um, so it's gonna be quite an event. So everybody can be there Saturday, uh, October 25th. Starts at nine with our, um, farmer's market and then I'll run till about three in the afternoon with everything else, so be quite a day, so hope everybody can make it.
I just want to add to that, so from four to seven, fire department's doing their hall roast too after that, so.
Okay.
Kind of like we did last year, after they get done with the, the uptown, then they can come have dinner.
Good.
Here, if they'd like.
Absolutely, good, good.
What time?
Four to seven. Be a big day and a big thank you to Jill Orlando for organizing all that, so.
And Trick or Treat's on the 31st?
Uh, Trick or Treat's 31st and from 5:00 to 8:00 PM.
Got it.
And anybody participating, uh, will leave a porch lights on. And, okay, Hands of Hope, did you want to present? Okay.
My name is Linda Wilk and I'm Director of Hands of Hope, which is part of Radiant Health. And Radiant Health, so to give you a little bit of background, I have been with Hands of Hope or was Family Service Society Incorporated since 1994. So when I first started, the agency, Family Services, had an office in Blackford County. And so I was new, I had established in Grant, was asked to start in Wabash, was also here in Blackford. And then our agency moved out of Blackford and so I moved myself out of Blackford because Muncie, a better way, at that time was serving Blackford County. Well, when, fast forward to Family Service Society merging with Grant Blackford in 2023, they then took over the office here and we called it now Radiant Health. And so as I started to do employee orientation and somebody would say, well, I'm in the Blackford office, I'd say, well, then all my materials are irrelevant to you, you need a better way. Didn't feel right to me. So I approached a better way, their executive director, and said, I'd really like to start serving Blackford County again. And she said, that's great, we don't have an office here, we don't have the capacity, really. And I said, well, we do, and so that's why I'm here tonight. I've met with the mayor, I've met with your police chief. I'm trying to get to all the key places to let people know that we are servicing Blackford County. Probably need to step back a little bit. We are a victim service provider, so we work with domestic violence, sexual violence, stalking and human trafficking. So anyone, whether they're involved with law enforcement or they're not, if they have a need, please encourage them, and I'm going to leave you some materials to reach out to us. Our services are all free, they're all confidential. I am right now in the process of writing a grant that if I'm successful, come January, I will be able to hire someone specific for Blackford County. So my original plan was to provide staff to come over and we still will do that, but I really feel like having someone specific for Blackford County is going to be better for everyone, um, cons, involved. I also, just a little bit about what we do, again, we're 24/7. So I've already, you know, again, talked to your police chief, I've met a couple of the officers that came to one of the trainings that I provided. Was very impressed with the two young officers that came, very interested in working with us and domestic violence and helping victims. We, um, as I said, are 24/7, which means that if law enforcement is on a scene, working with a victim, and they say, you know, victim needs safe shelter, victim needs a protective order, whatever it is victim needs, then call us. You know, I'm going to give you each, one of you my card and our, our 24-hour number. When, and I have staff 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM. The plan would be to have staff during the day here in Blackford County, then after hours, we each carry a cell phone. So if it's, again, if it's a, something they need immediate assistance, they dial number one, whoever's on call is going to then respond and come. And like I tried to make sure law enforcement knows, that means we will be there to help you, you know? So if you say the victim's living with their abuser, maybe their abuser's family, cause we have that happen, abuser's been arrested, cause law enforcement has probable cause to make that arrest, victim can't stay there now, well, then that becomes our responsibility to find them a safe place to stay and work with them as long as they need services. So that could be getting a protective order, it could be assisting them with safety measures like security cameras, door jams, window bars. It could be relocating them, you know, to a safe shelter. It could be getting a protective order, going to court with them, abuser's evicted from that property and then victim come, come back and live there again. We're going to work with the victim to whatever their needs are. We're not going to dictate what they're going to do, it's up to them. But I need community to talk about us, to let people know we're a good program, we're, you know, we're here to help. I understand that Blackford County is a small, close-knit community. That can maybe be difficult sometimes for someone to trust someone outside of the community. That's why I want to integrate myself into the community. So if there's other places I can speak, I've spoken a couple churches, um, I'd like to get to your rotaries, to, you know, your service clubs, any organization, no matter how small, how big, I want to go and educate them, talk to them. October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, that's another reason I wanted to come this month. I did bring a few ribbons, if anybody is interested in wearing a ribbon. And again, I have our brochures and materials. And this Thursday is Purple Thursday, so if you can wear purple. And again, I'll give you my card if you can take a picture and send it to me or put it directly on our Facebook page, love to do that, too. So it's all about creating awareness. You know, domestic violence, as long as I've been doing this work, it's still something that people don't like to talk about, they don't like to recognize, they like to think it's just physical. We want to talk to someone when it's beginning, when the emotional, the verbal, the name calling, the put downs, when all of that is happening. We want to get to them before law enforcement has to get involved, that's the ideal. If law enforcement needs to get involved, we want to be that helping hand for law enforcement, for the community. But again, you know, we want to be here to assist. So if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.[1719.48] I'll just share, funding-wise, a lot of our funding is through grants. We also do get local contributions, donations. That's another thing, as I, you know, start to work closer with Blackford County, we want to come up with resources. You know, we know the food pantry, there's a constant need, so we wanna be able to provide those things for clients, whether it's hygiene products, or, you know, other things that they can't get through food stamps. Those are things that we can help to create more of a barrier buster, so that if they're staying because of financial reasons, 'cause a lot of times that's why they stay, we can help them work through that. So, don't, you know, I always say, call us, let us help, you know, figure out next steps, so. And we have had, had a few calls, we're currently working with a couple people from Blackford County, so. But can, you know, again, it's all about getting the word out, letting people know. We tried to do a big campaign, we had some money for billboards that we had recently, um, and materials, so I just, um, appreciate the opportunity to come here and share a little bit about what we're doing, and give you a little bit of our materials. And if you have any questions for me, I know John knows me fairly well. Worked with him once or twice.
Yeah.
Yep.
On different campaigns.
Not for domestic violence. Through the radio station, just to clarify.
And the book I gave you is, um, something we created a few years ago locally. And it has all kinds of information about domestic violence, sexual violence, stalking, and substance abuse, and, um, also some healthy relationship information. And I know the mayor was willing to set up our materials, I appreciate that upfront. I know that, uh, law enforcement has our materials, so again, it's just about, as you think of somewhere that I could leave materials or speak, please, you have my card now.
Dropped anything off at the library?
I have not yet. No, I will definitely do that, though. I know when I met with the mayor, it was a busy weekend, so, for you guys, so, yeah, we'll definitely do that.
Maybe the food pantry is Venus?
I will, yeah. I need to get your email address, and then I'll just make me contact, communicate with you, if that works.
Yeah.
Anybody want a ribbon? Should I leave the ribbons?
Sure, yeah, yeah, that's illegal, just. Oh, okay, alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you, Linda.
Yeah.
Okay, so Thursday's.
Thursday is Purple Thursday.
Purple Thursday, okay, alright.
We're purple on Thursday.
Domestic awareness, domestic abuse.
Awareness, yes. And that's a national initiative, so you'll be, just the whole nation hopefully will be in purple.
Okay, good, good.
That would be a good idea.
Very good, very good. Okay, well, thank you. And Jessica Tauber from Purdue Extension, uh, Main Street Project is here.
Yes, so I'm Jessica Tabor.
Tabor, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Tater is the funniest one that I've had so far, but.
Tater?
Yeah, they, they come up with some good ones, and. So, I'm Jessica, and I'm from Purdue Extension, and I am working with Montpelier to bring Main Street locally. And the mayor recently signed the letter of intent, which I sent to Okra, so, big step. I'm waiting to hear back from them, and they will send back a questionnaire, which I will fill out with the help of the mayor, and then hopefully, um, contact some of you guys, get your input before we send that back. Um, I wanted to share with you the board that's gonna be representing you guys. The president is Justin Morris, the vice president is Shayna McKinnon. Um, the secretary is Jill, Jill Orlando, she's very involved in your community. The treasurer is Casey Rinker, and we have Officer Jarvis on the board as well, which is a nice little touch there. Um, it would be great if somebody from the city council would like to join, um, if you guys wanna call me, we can talk about that, and see what that'll look like for you guys. Um, one of the big projects that we're currently working on is to help revamp one of your corner parks. And then, and we're still in talks with, working with the Eli Pharmacy current owner, to get that storefront back up and running, so. Some exciting things for Main Street, um, and then just to give you guys a heads up, once the board meets, we will be coming to you guys to see about getting a donation or a contribution to kinda kickstart things, so, just wanted to throw that out there. Um, thank you for your time, and let me know if you have any questions.
Long-term, where, where do you see this project going?
Where do I see this project going? Um, my job with Purdue ends in April, which is right when you guys are gonna find out where your next steps are. But I'm not, just because my job ends, doesn't mean I'm gonna leave, because this is my first big community project. I'm kicking a little emotional, so, so be my baby. Um, I'm really excited about it. I feel like we have a good, strong board. Um, Justin Morris is, is ready to go. He's stoked about what went on in Hartford City for his barber shop, he's ready to bring that over here. Um, Shayna's excited about it, Jill and Casey, you know, they have more energy than a preschooler, so you guys know them. Um, at, in April, like I said, is when you'll find out if you guys got accepted to move on to the next step. At that time, I will already have you guys set up to almost be approved in October for your next step. Um, I'll have the building inventory pretty much done. Um, I will make sure we have more volunteers. Um, the more we talk about this, just like with Hands of Hope, the more you talk about it, the more people are aware. Um, and the more people I talk about this to, they're really excited about highlighting the history in your guys' area, so, that's where I see the program.
Alright, okay, any questions or any thoughts? Okay.
Anybody wanna join?
Yeah, okay, yeah, okay, alright, thank you.
Alright, thanks, guys.
Okay.
And we, I think I emailed this, why did email us to you guys? Uh, we had a couple grants we got, I, I'll, I'll share just the first one here. Um, uh, through Dave Keizer, we got a seventy thousand dollar housing preservation grant, um, to make, uh, to support critical upgrades to existing housing. It is specifically for use to assist with low and very low-income residents, uh, with essential home repairs. Nice thing about this is, is that, uh, actually, it doesn't, Dave and his crew are administering it, so we don't have to do any work here at the city. But, uh, because there's gotta be application process and grading, but anybody who, um, you know, if, if you know somebody who needs, who's living in a house that, you know, needs a new furnace, needs something, some major roof repairs or something like that, this grant's available for them. And this would be somebody, obviously, for somebody who's.
Is low-income?
Very low-income, yeah, this is the, the people that, the most needy, so, and there's an application that you do have to fill out. Um, but, uh, it's, you know, nice thing is, it's not, it's gonna be any extra work for us, so. Not, and, and, and great for the city, too, for that, that we're getting this, so, we're, I'm very excited about, so it's a double win in many ways. Um, so, um, yeah, that was, that's a, that was a great bonus, so. Uh, should help some of our, our, uh, local people with making some housing improvements that I'm sure is needed. So, there'll be more details of that following. Uh, we haven't got the applications or anything yet. I think I probably started first of the year. Traffic ordinance, we talked about this last month, I think it was last month, yeah. Starting our ordinance, we are reducing our speed from starting at Chestnut, um, to twenty-five, and going up to Monroe Street, and from Monroe Street north on, on Main Street, we'd be twenty miles an hour. And, uh, there was some debate over what road we can, we can control. Six thirty north is the county's call for what the speed I have requested, that they, they lower the speed, because as of right now, the speed limit's gonna go from fifty-five to twenty-five. And that's not safe. Um, I have been to two, um, county commissioner meetings and, and asked them a couple times, and said they were gonna look into it. Um, that's as far as we've gotten, so, I'm, I'm, this is, this is an issue, though. I am hoping, if you know any of the county commissioners, I'd say, please talk to them about this. Um, but, but I guess first off, I, we've, I know we've talked about this, uh, is there any more discussion?
So, the road from Chestnut to six thirty, that whole road is controlled by the county?
It's, it's, um, is that right, Chris?
Sorry?
Um, six thirty to Chestnut, that's all county?
So, depends who you talk to.
Yeah.
If you look at, if you look at, uh, well, let me back up, but talking with John Plumber, who is the county highway supervisor, uh, that, they show that, that entire stretch of road there between those two points, uh, on the county's inventory. However, looking at, um, the, uh, the Beegan Schneider map, kinda shows the city limits. When the city annexed down to six thirty north on the west side of the road, they have the city limits, uh, they have the roadway split up. The southbound lane going out of town is in the city, the eastbound lane coming in shows us the counties. So, ah, I'm gonna go with half of the road is ours and half of the road is theirs, unfortunately.
You can kinda see it up here on this map a little bit.
Unfortunately, the, the part we would like to control is in the county.
Yeah, the, the green is city. This is the greenest city, and I know that, I can see this on Facebook, but this is six thirty, east six thirty north. This is all city right here, this is county, uh, and this is where Main Street is coming, coming in, Main Street. So, basically, um, we would like the county to reduce the speed, or starting right here, but, 'cause it's, it's fifty-five until you get to this spot in Chestnut. No, that's too fast, that's, that's, you're, you're all the way into the city at that point. Um, so, anyways, that's, uh, so hopefully, this, the county will work with us on that. But, and Main Street, we just like to reduce some speed a little bit. That's a heavy residential area, and then, of course, this is, you got a lot of people jaywalking and across, you know, downtown, and you don't want people going really fast, you want people to lower, lower their speeds there, so.
Well, even the recommendation from six thirty to a chestnut was forty-five mile an hour.
Yes, yes, it was, yeah, that, that, Purdue, or, um, the Purdue study that recommends us, them reducing the speed, and the, the commissioners do have that report, um, so.
What do we gotta do to annex the other side of the road?
We could, if we wanna get in a fight.
Like, why wouldn't they just say?
I, we, we could do that.
Why, why wouldn't it just be?
I don't know.
I mean, it's not like they're plowing into Montpelier on that road, are they?
No, they're, they're.
When it snows?
Well, it, it sounds like they, they already, most people already reduced their speed. It sounds, the, 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 um, they're, actually, it's, it's only forty miles an hour on the other side. So, it's fifty-five going, um, in, but forty, forty miles an hour going out. And so, up until, um, six thirty, I think. Um, so, I, you know, honestly, just to be consistent, they should break the other side forty as well.
Are they afraid they're gonna have to pay for the sign?
I don't think that's an issue.
Paying over the sign.
I, I don't, I don't know the, I, I, I'm, don't know. I don't, I don't know, but I, I'm hoping they'll, eventually, they'll come to turn, I mean, that does make sense, if we're, but I guess we haven't approved this yet, so is there any thoughts or comments on changing to twenty-five at Chestnut?
No, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, um, so, okay, do you wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
John motions.
For ordinance twenty-five, or twenty twenty-five, or no, twenty twenty-five, zero nine.
Okay, alright, alright, and Travis, did you say again? Okay, Travis seconds, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, very good, alright, very good, yes.
And I have one last thing, if the mayor doesn't mind. Um, I received a contract today for, for Barnes and Thornburg, which is for Kim Bunschett to be the bond counsel. And I would like to propose that the mayor have authorization to sign anything that goes with the GEO bond, or the General Obligations Bond.
Is that streamlined?
I mean, I think it's gonna be around thirty thousand. The last GEO bond was like twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and Jim Higgins was like ten. And this, this states that they will only charge for the work they do. Rejection?
What was that caller again?
So, I could sign the, the GEO bond stuff, um.
We, we've approved the ordinance, we've approved the additional appropriation. There may be more things for the mayor to sign, like when they sell the bonds. So, I'm just asking for your permission to let him sign.
Gary motions?
It won't exceed anything we've, we've talked about.
I'll second.
Corey seconds, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, okay, well, that's, that is the end of our agenda. Um, any, uh, anything else we should go on to talk about? Okay, um, okay, mate, take a motion to approve, or pro-motion to adjourn?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Okay, okay. Motion's.
I'll second.
Corey seconds, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.